Good now. Okay. Hey, everybody. This is Nicholas Rogers with the Big Timber Lodge. Coming back at you live from the beautiful state of Colorado in my basement battle cab. And boy, do we have an episode for you tonight. We're going to be talking about the 2025 Colorado special session and what to expect. And there is a lot to unpack in this episode. So I don't know how long this one's gonna go, how long it's gonna be, but I have a lot to talk with you about. So let's just go ahead, say what's up to the Wolverines. Look like we have Scott, Jacob, Brandon Twig, Joey Knuckles. Hey, Joey Knuckles. We have surprise, earn. Oh, man. Welcome to Wolverines, folks. Welcome to resistance. Okay, so before we actually get into what's going to be in the special session, we need to talk about the four caveats or the four groups of things that Governor Polis said the special session can have new bills introduced to vote on. And I have an article right here from Colorado's governor office. And it says, Governor Polis calls special session to address budget hole created by the federal bill. So when he's talking about the federal bill, he's talking about House Resolution One, the big, beautiful bill that President Trump and the Republicans in DC passed, which is what Governor Polis and the Democrats here in Colorado is blaming our budgetary shortfalls on. And it turns out that that's a load of crap. And I have the proof. And unfortunately, I was talking with one of our state representatives today who was telling me that after we go over these, these bills, these 43 different bills that are being proposed for the special session, it's not going to solve our budget, our budgetary downfall, our budgetary deficit. So let's just go ahead and read this article. It's from August 6th of 2025. And folks, if you see my mic drop out, just spam the number one in chat, I'll see that. And I'll make sure that it comes back on. I apologize for the audio issues that I've been having lately. So it says, Denver, today, after carefully evaluating the negative impacts of the federal government's budget bill, HR1 Governor Polis is calling the General Assembly back into session to address the significant impact this has on Colorado's budget. The special session will begin on August 21st, 2025 at 10:00 AM. That is tomorrow. Governor Polis was joined by Office of State Planning and Budgeting Director Mark Ferendino. Unlike Congress, which has made the federal deficit and debt worse, Colorado actually has to balance our budget. We have a responsibility to deliver a balanced budget to Coloradans. So after careful consideration, I am calling the General Assembly to reconvene to find the best possible solution to the havoc HR1 has wreaked on Colorado's budget. This isn't about rhetoric. This is about hard numbers and balancing our budget, which once again, after speaking with one of our Colorado state representatives today, she told me that this special session isn't actually going to balance the budget. And there are essentially just pet projects that our governor and other state representatives want to see funded. And so they are going to put the burden on us Coloradans, small businesses, taxpayers, to keep funding their pet projects. We are committed to working alongside the General Assembly to address the unexpected and immediate revenue shortage caused by the passage of HR1, said Governor Polis, which folks, let's, let's call a spade a spade here. I have been covering Colorado politics now for a while. And even before HR1 was passed, Colorado was already facing a $1.2 billion budget deficit for this year. That, that was the big thing going into this legislative session in January, where Governor Polis told all the state representatives, don't propose bills that's going to cost this state money because we're dealing with a $1.2 billion deficit. And that was well before the big, beautiful bill was announced and it was coming forth and Colorado was going to see more federal funds cut to programs that the state level politicians don't want to see funding cut to. So just need to point that out. The simple reality is that HR1 immediately cuts Colorado's revenue, making it so that our budget is no longer balanced and that our Tabor refund has been taken away for this fiscal year. Yeah. All options are on the table. We look forward to working with the General Assembly to find the best possible solution. In these truly challenging circumstances caused by the federal reconciliation bill, said Office of State Planning and Budgeting Director Mark Ferendino. The call takes a carefully balanced approach to address the major impact that HR1 has on Colorado's budget. This includes closing tax loopholes, cutting spending and executive action that can save money in the budget. Tax loopholes, really? Okay. Some considerations include the following. So these are going to be the four areas that these bills are supposed to be built around. The first one is fiscal. Changes regarding revenue shortfalls and insufficient revenue, allowing the state to shift revenue by selling tax credits to certain taxpayers, extending the decoupling of the qualified business income deduction and decoupling the federal foreign derived intangible income FDII deduction, reductions to the home office and regional home office rate reduction and sales tax vendor fees. That's a big one. That's, that one right there is going to hurt small independent businesses here in Colorado. And we'll get to that here shortly. And that was proposed by Representative Woodrow, who announced he is not going to be running next year. So thank goodness that guy's leaving. Update our laws around foreign tax havens to ensure companies are paying appropriate taxes in Colorado. Healthcare, ensuring, ensuring availability of Medicaid services to eligible persons by providers banned from federal medical financing as a result of HR1. So that's, that's in direct line of sight of, you know, illegals being taken off of Medicaid. And then also, we'll just call them leeches being taken off of Medicaid. And the state wants to ensure that those people will be able to continue to get healthcare, right? Even though they technically shouldn't be getting free healthcare at the cost of us, the taxpayers. Concerning the health insurance affordability enterprise to facilitate a reduction in premium increases and avoid health insurance coverage loss, food security, adjustments to the referred measure in House Bill 251274, health school, healthy schools, meals for all program regarding the use of healthy school meals for all cash fund to include supplemental nutrition assistance program costs and related statutory provisions, which this is an interesting one, because I got insight into this, that yes, even though this is written with good intentions, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And schools and rural districts are incredibly upset about this because the state doesn't have funds to actually follow through with this. And what's going to end up happening is that schools and rural districts are going to have to foot the bill. And these schools are already dealing with budgetary constraints. Artificial intelligence, addressing the fiscal and implementation impact of SB 24205, consumer protections for artificial intelligence on consumers, businesses, and the state and local government. Governor Polis also announced that the state would implement a hiring freeze to help money or help save money and stabilize the state budget. Effective on August 27th, 2025 until December 31st, 2025, the governor ordered, orders state agencies in his purview to stop posting for new job opportunities with start dates in 2025. This will not include positions that are fully funded through Tabor exempt funding sources. Which folks, I, I covered this the other day. When, when you look at, like, I believe it was 96 or 1996, when, when you looked at the, the state budget, only like 42% or 46% of the state budget, I think it was 46% of the state budget came from Tabor exempt funding sources, things like fees, right? Like when I go to the DMV to register my wife's Kia Telluride and we pay $1,273 to register it and a whole onslaught of that is coming from fees, that is a Tabor exempt funding source. Okay. Now, fast forward to 2025, we have 70% of the state's budget coming from Tabor exempt funding sources. What does that mean? That means that we have seen like an insane percentage of the state budget not be increased through and increase the budget. The state rep that I was talking with today told me that if you look back at like 2020, right? To 2025, over like that six year period around there, we've seen about a 5% population growth. But our budget has increased by 50%. Why? How? Because I don't remember as a Coloradoan voting in the past six years to increase taxes, to increase our state budget by, by 50%. Do you? I don't. The governor's office will issue a directive outlining which positions will be exempt from this hiring freeze, including those necessary to ensure public safety and the safe and continuous operations of facilities in which people are in the care and custody of the state and to implement changes to safety net programs required by HR1. HR1 will reduce state revenue by over $1.2 billion in the current year and by roughly 700 million in the fiscal year of 2027 and fiscal year 2028. The loss of revenue is largely due to increased tax deductions for corporations. The bill also increases expenses by shifting costs from federal government to the states. This will start slowly but grow significantly over time with the impacts of SNAP match, which SNA P match and Medicaid provider fee reductions. This will start at about 50 to 100 million dollars in the first fiscal year, growing to nearly 1 billion in expenses by 2032. When accounting for loss in federal funds due to Medicaid and SNAP, the impact could be more than $3 billion. So it's, it's the federal government's fault because the federal government is going to reduce federal taxes to pay for social incentives that have been going to people that should not be collecting these social incentives, which means that realistically at a federal level, the federal government wants to reduce the amount of taxes that us hardworking Americans are having to incur so that the federal government can pay for social programs. And the federal government is saying, hey, we are cutting this out of your allotted budget because we're not going to be collecting these taxes. So therefore we don't have the money to give to you to pay for these social programs. And the state of Colorado is saying, well, we don't want to give up these social programs. And so we are going to find a way to tax Coloradans and create a bigger financial burden on the people in this state in order to keep these social programs operating. That's, that is what this declaration is saying. Now, I have the bill or the 2025 special session bills authorized by sponsor for pre-release. Okay. Right here. And these are the House bills that are going to be introduced. Now, this isn't a full list of the bills. I was told today there are about 43 bills that will be introduced. Now for my traditional Wolverine viewers, Wolverines. Unfortunately, there are being no bills introduced that will get rid of egregious gun control measures that we've seen passed in Colorado because they didn't meet one of the four criteria that I had covered. Hey, I have some articles too that I want to cover with you, just so you have a good understanding of what to expect coming out of this special session, because some of the things that are going to be coming down the pipeline is going to be creating chaos. All right. So we have the artificial intelligence systems provided by Weinberg. And there, I believe there's four AI bills that are being introduced, right? They want to, the state wants to figure out a way to control companies that use artificial intelligence. And we'll get into that in one of the articles. Sale of tax credits, insurance premium tax rate for home offices, eliminate state sales tax vendor fee. And that's the one that's going to hurt a lot of people. A lot of small businesses in Colorado benefit from this. And the state actually tried this back in 2009 to 2011. And they repealed it because it's, it's an incentive for small businesses. And we'll get into that one here shortly. Qualified bus income deduction, add back prescription drug benefit information transparency, consumer protections for AI interactions. There's AI number two. Continuity of care for impacted communities, improve affordability private health insurance, health ends affordability, interboard appointment, voter approval for state vendor fee reductions. Prohibit certain cash fund use against federal action additions to definition, federal taxable income, health insurance affordability fund allocation, spending reduction procedures, transfer of money in, in refinance discretionary account, health providers practice scope prevention care, limit subsidies, health ends affordability, enterprise retention of vendor fees for collecting sales tax. And then this is going to be from the Senate. State only funding for certain entities, healthy school meals for all processes to reduce spending during shortfall, reallocate DNR wolf funding to health insurance enterprises. This is a big one. We're going to cover this in an article here very shortly. It's all right, dude. Glad you joined the Big Timber Lodge tonight. Tech Neutral Anti-Discrimination Clarification Act. That's like number three or four. Increase transparency for algorithmic systems, income tax credit adjustment, voter approval additions to federal taxable income. And then finally, tax credit for health savings accounts. And yeah. So let's, let's jump into some of these articles that I have up. And then we're going to go back to some of these bills that this state representative and I were discussing today, that she said we should definitely be keeping an eye on and how it's going to impact Colorado. All right. So this is an article from Fox 31. It says, what to know about Colorado legislature's special session, hiring freeze and amid budget gap. It's a very short article. Denver, Colorado Governor Jared Polis has called state legislators back for a special session later this month and announcing a hiring freeze for the rest of the year to address a nearly $800 million hole in the general fund budget. Polis made the announcement Wednesday morning after news of more than $1 billion loss of revenue from the state caused at least in party, in part by President Trump's big, beautiful bill, which has led to a $700 million gap in the state's general fund. The special session will start August 21st and the hiring freeze begins August 27th and lasts through the end of the year. Here's what Colorado General Assembly will address in the session to tackle the budget gap, how the special session will work and the jobs the hiring freeze will affect. How special sessions work, what's decided. Colorado General Assembly has met in special sessions several times in recent years with increasing frequency since Polis took office between 2019. Legislators had only met outside regular sessions six times, but Polis has already called for special sessions since 2020, including this year's upcoming one. Makes you just think, if we're having it that frequently, is it really that special? Or is it just the second legislative session? The Colorado constitution allows governors to call them under extraordinary occasions. And technically, the General Assembly can call itself to a special session with two thirds majority in favor, though the legislature said that has never happened according to the, according to a 2024 frequently asked questions fact sheet. When a governor calls a special session, they determine the scope of the session and the topics legislators will consider. Those were those four topics that we discussed earlier. The General Assembly cannot consider business outside of the scope of the governor's proclamation, though that is a subjective measurement. Yeah, that's very much subjective. So how long will the session last? That will depend on how long it takes legislators to figure out a resolution to the budget shortfall, which after talking with the state representative, once again, they told me today that these bills that have been put forth for the special session aren't actually going to find resolution for our budgetary shortfall. Governors are not allowed to set a timeframe or unilaterally adjourn the special session. And the session ends when the General Assembly adopts a joint resolution to do so, typically after completing the business at hand in the session. The longest special session since the General Assembly started meeting every year lasted 60 days back in 1991. Budget shortfalls. At the press conference on Wednesday morning, Polis brought a 3,000 page copy of President Trump's big, beautiful bill illustrating from where he and state officials say the state's budget issues are coming. The state budget director had also previously said the bill passed earlier this year would dramatically impact state finances. Polis said the impact resulted in an out of balance budget with a $1.2 billion loss of state revenue. We begin the year with a balanced budget, which I was proud to sign in April, our state's fiscal year, starting in July 1st. Starting July 1st, Polis said, not only was it a balanced budget, was one that had a Tabor surplus. There were about $300 million surplus based on estimates. And that has all changed with the signature of President Trump on this bill here. Polis's office said that some of the considerations legislators should look at is including closing tax loopholes, cutting spending and addressing revenue shortfalls, hiring freeze. In addition to the special session, Polis also ordered a hiring freeze that will begin later this month and last the rest of the year. Okay. So a lot of gaslighting going on there. As I mentioned earlier, the state was already facing like a $1.2 billion budgetary deficit before the big, beautiful bill passed. That was, that was one of the big things that Polis was telling state legislators is they could not pass bills that was going to cost the state. And I even testified against one of the bills that did pass where they're standing up a law enforcement agency under the Department of Revenue that's going to become like Colorado's ATF to do, you know, spot inspections on Colorado firearm license dealers around the state. And this department has not been stood up. The training has not been stood up. The location has not been stood up. The equipment has not been purchased. So my, my argument to them when I testified this year was if Governor Polis has said that you cannot pass a bill that's going to cost the state money, how can you pass this bill to stand up an agency that is going to cost the state millions of dollars? And this was way before the big, beautiful bill came through. So it really pisses me off to sit here and, and see our politicians blaming the big, beautiful, big, beautiful bill for a budgetary shortfall when we were already in one. Here's another article from CityCast Denver. The 2025 Colorado special session explained, another short article. State lawmakers are scheduled to return to the Capitol tomorrow. This is written today, August 21st for a special session to address an estimated $783 million shortfall in the state budget, plus renegotiate the terms of the state's new AI law. What does that mean for Denverites? Let's break it down. First, what's the special session? A special session is when state lawmakers convene outside of the regular 120 day legislative session. The state constitution allows for the governor to call a special session for extraordinary occasions. Lawmakers may only address the subject specifically identified, the four topics, by the governor when the session was called. In this case, Governor Polis said that he will discuss roughly the $783 million hole in the state budget, as well as take a second look at Colorado's recently passed artificial intelligence law. That's a big one. They'll stay in session as long as they need to, but most special sessions in Colorado have lasted just three days. Why is there a budget deficit? When Congress passed President Trump's one big, beautiful bill act in July establishing new major tax cut, it dramatically reduced Colorado state income tax collections. Why? Colorado is just one of four states with a state tax system that is directly tied to the federal tax system. It uses federal taxable income to determine how much residents pay in state taxes. With the new federal tax breaks, Colorado is facing an unexpected $783 million shortfall. That's partially true. Colorado voted or the state legislator voted to decouple Colorado's income tax from the federal income tax. What will lawmakers discuss? Mostly the state budget. The main goal of this session is to find money in the couch cushions to cover the deficit. Experts speculate they'll close existing tax loopholes, making cuts to current spending plans and dip into the state reserves. So we do have like a $2.3 billion reserve. So the Colorado does have that reserve. Which I think what's going to end up happening is, yes, they're going to close the gap, some with, with these bills, these 43 bills that have been proposed for the special session. But the state is not going to find true resolution without dipping into the state's reserve. At least one group of lawmakers plan to suggest pausing the state's wolf reintroduction program, which is going to be the next article we're going to cover. The General Assembly, and it's not much money, right? Which is kind of crazy. The General Assembly will also discuss SB 24205, a first in the nation bill setting guardrails for artificial intelligence usage, which was reluctantly signed by the governor last May. Now he wishes to review and revise the law. Okay. So what is, what is one of the ways that they're looking to, you know, get a little bit of money back into the general fund? And that is going to be putting a pause on wolf reintroduction. Okay. So this is from the Denver Post. It says, Colorado lawmakers push for pause on wolf reintroduction in new bill for special session as legislature grapples with budget, money for more wolves would go to health insurance program. So this is one that is going to really cause chaos in the Denver bolter, Denver bolter, boulder, metroplex, because the wolf reintroduction was a ballot measure that Coloradans voted for. And they voted yes. And now what is being proposed is that we withhold the money for the wolf reintroduction program to put towards health insurance programs. So that people that shouldn't be receiving free healthcare can continue to receive free healthcare. Now, I myself am not happy with the way that they did the wolf reintroduction program in the state of Colorado. And I am definitely not happy with the fact that Colorado passed it in the ballot initiative that even when the help, the, the wolf population gets incredibly healthy in Colorado and gets beyond healthy, there will be no means to cull the herds or, or the packs of wolves and reduce their numbers in the state of Colorado. So I'm not a huge proponent of the wolf reintroduction program, but it was a ballot initiative that Colorado voted yes on, voted to use our taxpayer funds, our, our taxes to do this initiative. And now there's going to be a ballot, or not a ballot, a measure, a bill that's proposed, and we're going to get to that shortly, that is going to withhold those funds that Colorado voted yes on to put towards illegal healthcare. So this is going to create a massive crap storm in Denver. Let's go ahead and zoom in on this one. Colorado lawmakers will consider pausing the state's wolf reintroduction program for a year to reduce spending amid massive budget deficit. A bipartisan bill made public Tuesday would reallocate $254,000. That's not that much money when we're looking at nearly a billion dollar deficit, though, that's set aside for transporting more wolves to Colorado this winter and instead use it to help pay for a state program to lower health insurance causes. The bill will be heard during a special legislative session that starts Thursday to address the $783 million state general fund budget deficit caused by the federal tax bill. Now, it's interesting that they say that this money is just being used for transporting more wolves to Colorado. more wolves to Colorado, because when I spoke with our state representative, she told me that in reality, a lot of that $254,000 is being used to pay off ranchers whose livestock is being killed by the wolves. Because the state did do that. They did, at least with the ballot initiative, we said, hey, we're going to set aside this much money every year, and if a wolf kills your livestock, you will be reimbursed for it. So this, this right here, this bipartisan bill potentially will impact our ranching community. And we're not talking about the millionaires and billionaires out in Aspen and Breckenridge and Vail that have hobby farms that use agricultural tax loopholes by having, you know, like two head of cattle and four goats, and then all of a sudden they're considered an agricultural ranch, and then they get a massive tax benefit by doing this. We're talking about legitimate ranchers whose livelihood is raising livestock. Those are going to be the people that are going to be greatly impacted by this. And this is a bipartisan bill. "The bill has broad sponsorship extending from the Western Slope to the Front Range, but it was unclear if it would gain traction with lawmakers more broadly during the short session. Under the bill, state funding for other aspects of the wolf program like staffing, conflict minimization, and compensation of ranchers for impacts livestock would remain in place." That's not what the state representative was telling me. So, and I had a long conversation today with our state rep. "If implemented, the budget for the wolf program during the fiscal year, which runs through next June, would shrink from $2.1 million to $1.8 million. CPW would not be permitted to use any of the remaining fun, uh, money for a new reintroduction round. I think the state would make a better investment in people's health insurance right now rather than spending money on more wolves," said Senator Dylan Roberts, a Dylan Democrat who is sponsoring the bill. "Colorado Parks and Wildlife has released two batches of wolves captured elsewhere into the state so far, 10 from Oregon in December of 2023 and 15 from the British Columbia in January. Those wolves have since reproduced and established four packs across the state. CPW has not released final counts for the number of pups born this summer, but at least 30 wolves roam Colorado. A slim majority of Coloradans voted in 2020 to reintroduce the canines, reintroduce the canines to the state, with many urban voters casting their ballots in favor of the effort and rural voters opposing it. Gray wolves are a native species to Colorado but were eradicated from the state through hunting and poisoning. State staff during the 2020 ballot campaign estimated the wolf program would cost about $800,000 a year, but it has been much more expensive than expected. The program costs $3.5 million in 2024 to 2025 fiscal year, including hundreds of thousands of dollars paid to ranchers to compensate for livestock killed by wolves and other indirect impacts to livestock from wolves' presence. Many of the state ranching groups have opposed the reintroduction of the wolves, which have killed and injured 46 head of livestock and one working dog since April of 2024, but previous efforts to halt or pause the reintroduction effort have failed. A pause on bringing more wolves to Colorado could give CPW more time to improve its conflict minimization programs, Roberts said. A pause would not violate the language of Proposition 114, he said, since it required the state to reintroduce the species by the end of 2023, but did not set further timelines for how the program would unfold. This is a reasonable one-year pause that I think will make the program better in the long run, he said. Wolf advocates slammed the bill and said it would reverse progress made by the CPW to implement the will of voters." So once again, this is touching on the fact that Colorado put up a ballot initiative, and Coloradans voted yes with the expectation of things happening in a chronological order in the state saying, "Well, we're going to pause this for a year to use the funds that you voted to use for wolf reintroduction for healthcare." "The bill is a flimsy pretext to use the budget crisis to implement Roberts and other lawmakers' longstanding goal to pause the wolf program," said Michael Saul, the director of the Rockies and Plains Program for Defenders of Wildlife. "We've seen Roberts determine opposition to any wolves in Colorado for years," he said. "It's disingenuous to say this is anything but an attempt to set the population back to zero. The bill comes as CPW continues its attempt to kill at least two more wolves connected to livestock killings. More wolves are needed to make up for those killings and continued deaths among the population. If we stop now before we have enough starter wolves, and while we're killing wolves, we're not just pausing the program, we're essentially setting it back to square ones," Saul said. So yeah. This is, this is what's happening as, as one of the issues with our special session. It, it's kind of crazy. So some of the bills that, that this state representative said that we needed to cover today was SB 06, SB 07. What was it, 10? So that's down here. This is the wolf. Yeah, so there's, there's a lot to read on all of these, but SB 06 is sponsored by Mabry, Boßnecker, Weissman, and Gonzalez. And it's concerning adjustments to the insurance premium tax rate, tax expenditure for a home office or regional office. So these are going to be like self-employed individuals. "This summary applies to this bill introduced and does not reflect any amendments. The bill beginning in 2026 calendar year repeals the insurance premium tax rate expenditure for a home office or regional home office. Legislative declaration, the General Assembly finds that based on the Office of the State Auditors' two evaluations of reduced insurance premium tax rates for a company with a home office or regional home office in Colorado, this reduces insurance premium tax rate was designed, this isn't the self-insured one, but this is one she wanted me to talk about. However, even when with amended criteria enacted in House Bill 211312, insurance companies continue to qualify for rate reduction despite not maintaining or increasing their overall employment in Colorado. The benefit that insurance companies receive from the rate reduction may increase even if companies do not increase employment in Colorado because the tax benefit is based on premiums collected, and premiums are rising nationwide. The General Assembly further finds the primary purpose of repealing the reduced insurance premium tax rate for a company with a home office or regional office in Colorado is to better align the state's insurance premium tax code with the tax code of other states so that Colorado is less of an outlier regarding how insurance taxpayers can compute their taxes owed and any revenue gain that results from improved alignment of the state's insurance premium tax code with the tax codes of other states is incidental to the primary purpose of better aligning the state's insurance premium tax code with the tax codes of other states." So this, this is going to affect insurance companies that have home or regional offices in Colorado that get a reduced insurance premium tax rate. So if you work for a company that has a home headquarters or a regional office in Colorado, it looks like they're going to try to get rid of that, the, the reduced insurance premium tax rate. Uh, another bill that I was told to talk about is, I believe this is number seven. This is Woodrow McCormick Kip in Winter, concerning the elimination of sales tax vendor fee that retailers are authorized to retain in connection with collecting and remitting state sales tax. So in Colorado, if you're a business, a small business, right? Not all retailers are equally compensated for the services. Only retailers that have a total taxable sales of $1 million or less are able to collect the vendor fee. So there's, there's, Colorado does this thing for small businesses that are making a million dollars or less, where they can essentially get a reimbursement up to 4% of the tax that they pay to the state with the max cap of $1,000 for an administrative fee to file state sales tax because it's, it's a big burden. It's a, it's a administrative burden on small businesses to file the sales tax and then give it to the state. So the state gives those small businesses for doing their job correctly, a, a 4% or a thousand dollar kickback. And they're looking to get rid of that. Now, if you're already a big business and you're making a million dollars or more, you're not receiving this. So this is truly going to be targeting small businesses. And this is even like, you know, mom and pop businesses that are online or, or, you know, have a small, little mom and pop brick and mortar store. Those are the people that are going to be impacted by this. And, and one of the reasons why they're doing this is because there are parts of Colorado that vary the amount of money or percentage that this, this vendor fee that goes back to these mom and pop businesses, they vary the amount. It's like 2.6% or 4% or 2.9%, depending on where you're at. And Woodrow, the person that actually is the main sponsor for this one, said, "Instead of the removal of the fee demonstrates the General Assembly's intent that the collection of sales tax revenue be fair and equal throughout the state, and that the burdens of doing so are limited, fair and equal throughout the state." So instead of helping out, let's say, a mom and pop business that's in a part of Colorado that's only giving back, let's say, 2.6% of the sales tax collected back to that business as long as it's below $1,000. You know, and, and comparing that to another part of Colorado that's giving up the 4% instead of saying, hey, we're just going to have a universal amount of, of 4%. A, a county or a town cannot adjust that percentage. It's going to be 4% across the board to help out mom and pop businesses. Instead, they're just going to remove the kickback altogether across the state for all small businesses. That's, that's what's happening with this bill. David, thank you for joining the Big Timber Lodge. Thank you for joining the Resistance Wolverines! And then also, we have, this is the bill number 10, which, which is from the Senate bill. And this is the bipartisan bill that we just covered in the relocation of funding from the Division of Parks and Wildlife for the reintroduction of gray wolves to the Colorado Health Insurance Affordability Enterprise, HIAE, in connection, they're within reducing in appropriation. They want to reduce, the bill reduces $264,268 in appropriations for the 2025-2026 state fiscal year from the general fund to the Department of Natural Resources Division of Parks and Wildlife for the reintroduction of gray wolves. The bill requires the state treasurer to transfer a corresponding amount from the general fund to the Colorado Health Insurance Affordability Enterprise cash fund on September 1st of 2025. And I don't need to cover all of this stuff. I, I will go ahead and I will link the articles. I will link the bill, this, this right here over to in the video description and post it on X as well, and I'll do it on Rumble. I can't post it on, on Kick. But can we flip Colorado red at the midterms? Unfortunately, Kevin, unfortunately, no, we can't. It's not that, it's not a special election. It's a special session. But I, I like where your head's at. But yeah, I wanted to go over some of the numbers from a document that I have here, and I can't post the document, but I can read from it. And this is about total taxpayer expenses since 2021 in Colorado. Let me go to a, a webcam chat. Wolverines, hope you guys are doing all right. Okay. Total taxpayer expense since 2021 is, uh, relating to this is, is, is a lot of money. Healthcare spending on illegal immigrants. Guess how much the state of Colorado has spent on healthcare for illegal immigrants since 2021? $96,800,000. Is, is that not crazy? And then we also have around that's in that, a lot of that is due to the Health Insurance Affordability Enterprise. That's that HIAE that I was just talking about, where we're going to be taking $264,000 from the wolf reintroduction program and putting it over into the Health Insurance Affordability Enterprise. And we've already spent $98 million. Let me go to the next note. Supplemental increase for uncompensated care. We've spent $13,900,000. Guess how much Colorado has spent on K through 12 education spending on illegal immigrants? And these, these folks, these are our actual notes from the Colorado government. Since 2021, Colorado has spent $352,350,000 on K through 12 education for illegal immigrants. That's crazy. Guess how much we've spent on higher education assistance costs? $90,200,000. This is a great one because we talk about the fact, you know, Colorado is one of the very few states where we give driver's licenses to illegal immigrants. Guess how much Colorado?
$19,100,000.
$19,100,000. Guess how much? Jeremiah, thank you for joining the Big Timber Lodge. Welcome to Wolverines! Legal counsel for Immigration's Legal Defense Fund. So Colorado has a general fund that we, 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 we use our taxpayer money or our fees set aside to give illegal immigrants legal counsel. And since 2021, we have spent $2.1 million, or we have a $700,000 annual general fund for their defense. So before we go forward, Reginald Hughes, thank you for joining the Big Timber Lodge Wolverines! Before we go for tomorrow into this special session, which isn't really going to solve any of our true budgetary deficit. They're, they're, they are going to be robbing Peter to pay Paul because our, our state legislators have, you know, pet projects or, or things that they want to see funded, that the federal government has decided that the federal government no longer is going to fund because it's a burden on American taxpayers. It's a burden to keep giving free healthcare, free education, free assistance to people that should not be receiving it. People that aren't even citizens seeing a reduction in the amount of, of federal funds coming to Colorado, and Colorado is saying, "We don't care. We are going to continue with these programs, and we have got to make up the budgetary deficit by taking it out on our small businesses." And unfortunately, folks, this is the big thing that I, I asked the state representative today about, what about Tabor? Doesn't Tabor protect us with our taxes? She said, "Yes, as an individual, as a Coloradoan paying taxes, you are protected by the taxpayer bill of right, but small businesses and businesses in general are not protected by Tabor." So a lot of the money that they are going to be collecting to come up with budgetary shortfall deficit, or to fix the budgetary shortfall deficit, is going to be coming from attacking and creating more financial burden. and creating more financial burden for small businesses and businesses in general in Colorado. And based off of common economic sense, when you start to increase the cost to do business, what happens with that business? They either can't afford to do business, or they pass the burden, the financial burden down to the consumer. And unfortunately, what we are going to end up seeing happen in Colorado is a lot of small businesses, mom and pop shops, people that were reaching for the American dream here in Colorado, are, are probably going to have to close up shop and go somewhere else or just give up on the American dream. But the mega corporations that have regional headquarters or, or home headquarters here in Colorado, for example, that are getting, you know, an insurance premium, you know, reduction for having their headquarters here, their regional headquarters here, um, those costs are going to be passed down to us is what's going to happen. So I'm sorry, I'm not that lively tonight, folks. I'm not feeling the greatest. I've got some health issues going on right now. Thank you for everybody for sending your prayers. I appreciate it. Um, but we are going to be staying on top of this special session and watching the chaos ensue. Because there's actually, from what I've been told, there are some old school Democrats that have been in power in Colorado for a while, that are butting heads with these new hardcore liberal progressives who then are also butting head with Governor Polis. That's one of the reasons why there's like four AI bills on the docket for this special session. And Governor Polis has one of those bills that has been introduced. And other people are, are in opposition to Polis's bill that are Democrats. So it's going to be very interesting to see what happens, what actually makes it through this special session and gets to the governor's desk and whether or not he signs off on them. So folks, if you want to stay tuned, if you want to be kept up to date, subscribe to the Big Timber Lodge YouTube channel, turn on notifications, and I will be bringing you up to date information about what is going on with all 43 of these proposed bills. Randy, thank you for joining the Big Timber Lodge. Welcome to Wolverines. And I will be. And I'm also going to be bringing some of our freedom fighting representatives onto the Big Timber Lodge livestream here very shortly to talk about what is going on behind closed doors with this special session, what it looks like for the state. I know one of the bills that wasn't listed, but is going to be reintroduced, which would have saved the state hundreds of millions of dollars every year, was, is a bill that's going to be shot down. I forget the number for it. Um, it's like 53, I forget the number. Um, and I'm going to have the representative that's introducing this bill come on and talk about it. But it was going to stop Colorado using taxpayer funds to perform trans surgeries and abortions on people that aren't from Colorado that come here from other states as well as illegal immigrants. But the representative that is introducing this bill already told me that it's going to be shot down and it would save the state hundreds of millions of dollars a year. Folks, Colorado has a budget problem right now because our representatives that are leading the state have a spending problem. And they have a spending problem because leading them for what is important with the state budget. They aren't actually focusing on what's going to help Coloradans. They have pet projects for the fringe few that is costing the state hundreds of millions of dollars in taxpayer funds and fees. This state could just cut spending to superfluous budgetary needs to things that aren't actually bettering the state. And we could have a balanced budget. There was no need for this special session. Governor Polis could have cut spending. So folks, thank you for joining the Big Timber Lodge. We have been going for an hour tonight. Once again, I apologize for my soft demeanor tonight. I'm not feeling the greatest. Um, and once again, thank you all for your prayers. And if you're new to the Big Timber Lodge and the Wolverines, thank you for joining. I've had a massive uptick on X lately and also on YouTube and Rumble. Kick? Not so much. But that's where you can find me if you want to watch the Big Timber Lodge streams and also long format videos about firearm content, which is actually how I got this channel started on YouTube. Additionally, if you would like to come hang out with Big Timber, we are having the first annual, the inaugural Big Timber Lodge barbecue at the I-68 Training Facility up in Northeast Colorado Springs on September 13th from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. If you would like to RSVP for that barbecue, it is free for you to come. The entry, food, and entertainment and beverages are free. If you would like to compete in the shooting competition that is going to be hosted by the I-68 family, you can register on their website, which is also linked in the video description below, for a low cost of $25. Everybody that registers to compete in the shooting competition will receive free Big Timber Lodge swag and other swag from people that support the channel, and there will be prizes. So if you would like to sign up for the Big Timber Lodge barbecue, just to come and hang out with other like-minded patriots, please RSVP through the email in the video description below. And if you would like to compete, please use the link to the I-68 website where you can register for the shooting competition. And as always, Colorado, let's get to work.